Change the low-income eligibility from 80 percent of median to 100 percent of median They did, the Affordable Housing Trust did have a couple other comments. One of them had to do with if people are calling these accessory dwelling units, why are we calling them accessory apartments? I did take a look at some of the, Kyle had done some edits to the spreadsheet that gave an outline of what everyone in Cape Cod is kind of doing with their accessory dwelling units. Hopefully, we covered everything. But I did look at a few of those and they do intermix. Some of them are called accessory apartments and some of them are called accessory dwellings. I think it's a function of when their bylaws were originally enacted. I talked to Mary Wagon and she mentioned that, you know, when the Cape Cod Commission was starting this initiative like 10 years ago, they were calling them accessory apartments, which I think is more accurate as to possibly what they are versus an accessory dwelling unit might sound a little bit more formal or a little bit more than what it really is versus an apartment, which is really what we're talking about. So that was something that they had talked about. And also talked about the residency. I know that Joanne had brought that up of whether someone had to be full-time occupancy of one of the units. I think what we're really hoping not to do is have two units rented out, but it doesn't mean that somebody couldn't have the main house, for example, be their summer home and they come periodically during the summer, but they also have an accessory apartment that they rent out year-round, which might be advantageous to them because then they'd have someone who'd be watching it while they're away. So we might want to take a look at some of the language with regard to that. And then Eric Tolly had talked a little bit about whether there's any relief that could be given for accessory dwelling units with regard to septic systems. You know, if you have a three-bedroom septic system right now, if you want to add an accessory apartment, it's very expensive to increase your septic system if you're even allowed to do so versus the likelihood of all of those bedrooms being used full-time year-round is unlikely. I don't think that's possible. I think it's a Title V state regulation. I'll confirm it with the Health Department, but I don't think that that's something that can be changed. But he was just wondering if some leniency could be given because that is also another big-ticket item if people are looking at an affordable unit or an accessory unit that not only do they have to do all the improvements, but then they also might potentially have to update. We talked about the fact that what people normally do is they somehow decommission a bedroom in the main house. You know, they'd take out a door or open a casing or maybe make a dressing room out of one of them that's attached to another bedroom and that type of thing, and that's how it's addressed. And so that's kind of what happened on the affordable housing accessory apartment front since we met last. So I didn't know whether you guys wanted to go through any of these comments from the Housing Trust or you're interested in making any of those edits or how you feel.
Joe, you and Tom were at the meeting along with, oh, three you were. So why don't you, Joe, why don't you lead us up? Do you have any comments on any of these you want to add in, change?
The one comment that had come up, Kathy had mentioned it as well, was the median income at 80 percent vis-à-vis 100. And I think we should consider the 100, given all of those factors that don't necessarily show up on an income statement of some kind, including that kind of debt.
Debt, yeah.
So I think the likelihood is you might, that 20 percent difference might make it also more likely that there wouldn't be an issue with the rent being paid. Rents are not, you know, super low. They're, you know, they're reasonable. And so the likelihood of an individual being able to pay the rent is higher if his or her median income is higher.
Right.
So I thought that was a good comment that you had brought back from one of the committee meetings and made again last night. Changing the name doesn't really matter to me. Sounds a bit more formal. Sounds very zoning-like to have it be called an accessory dwelling unit. I'm indifferent in terms of its title.
I think his point was just to be consistent.
Yeah, that's what we're calling it throughout the wording we use within the actual document is that. So why not have the appropriate title?
Sure.
I happen to agree with Joanne. I'd like to see us go to the 100 percent on the median income. It doesn't change anything else. It doesn't change the amount of rent that can be charged or anything. It's just simply would open it up to more people, I think. I know we've had some comments that people would like to get rid of the affordability to start with, but I don't necessarily agree with that because I think we want to keep the rents reasonable and have some control over the rents. As far as whether we call them dwelling units or apartments, I don't, we'll save Kathy an awful lot of changes because apartments, the term apartments used an awful lot in our current bylaw and that's how we call them. I don't think we should, you know, we're really not changing what they are, so why change the name?
So you're not interested in changing the name?
No.
Okay.
Sir?
I agree with the 100 percent factor. I think that would be more of a reflection of workforce. And I think that by dropping the affordable restriction, you may see more people come forward and...
You mean the deed restriction?
The deed restriction, yeah. I think that kind of turns people off going through the formality of going to the registry and so on and so forth or having an attorney do it. And I think that what we've done to date with the family dwelling unit will probably bring more opportunities forward for perhaps caregivers, friends of the immediate family, people who would just generally need housing and could coexist in that environment. So I think what we've done, and I agree with you Kathy, if we, you made a mention here somewhere in comments relative to, if we go much deeper in this, then we'll probably have to get into public meetings and explain what the intent is. So I think the way we have it now is reasonable and we should go forward with it.
Okay. You have your marching instructions.
Well, what am I doing? Am I changing it to accessory dwelling unit?
That was my last, my last question was, one of these bylaws we did in the past few years, we put almost like a line at the end of the booklet saying, oh, we were changing the title of the building inspector, commissioner, and we just made a one-line change. If you can pull that off, we should just probably go to ADU since that's what people are using. If you can't and you have to literally change line by line as norm-referenced, I really don't think it's worth your time or effort.
We could put it as a housekeeping issue like we usually do.
I think it's okay to include it within the article for the accessory apartments. Just say wherever accessory apartment is throughout the bylaw, it will be changed to, I'd have to go through and make sure that doesn't cause any problems, but yeah, that's easy to do with an article, sure.
Well, maybe the, we can call it, the 407 section can be called accessory dwelling units.
That's right.
We just leave it, the words apartment in there. It's just a general title of a category and...
It's a reference, yeah.
Yeah, it's a reference. Just leave it as accessory dwelling units for that 407 and then the rest of it, wherever apartments it appears, leave it alone. I don't think they're, I don't think they're in competition with each other. I don't think they...
It's just later you start talking about like in the definitions, affordable accessory apartment, affordable...
Yeah.
Family-related accessory apartment.
Apartments, we refer to apartments throughout the body of it. Do we even use accessory dwelling unit in the body yet? We don't because it never appeared before, right?
Correct. The terminology was accessory apartment.
Right.
I don't think you want to go one way or the other or somehow say accessory dwelling units parentheses accessory apartments or something to kind of keep people knowing that it's the same, it's literally exactly the same thing.
You could just put the apartments in brackets.
Now we're getting deeper into the quicksand.
Good point.
I would just rather either leave it alone or just do the one line. I still think we should just do the one line.
One line.
Clean of where we say AFT, AHT, we mean it's also going to be used as ADU type thing. That way, we don't have to go through the whole kit and caboodle and change the word apartment, but somebody at least has a leg to stand on and they fall back to accessory dwelling unit. So, there we go, done.
You want to do that, the one-liner and change it everywhere from accessory apartment to accessory dwelling unit?
I want the one line to reference the fact if they see the word affordable housing, affordable accessory dwelling unit, I think it is also the same as the accessory apartment. That's all. So if somebody's moving down from Springfield, Mass., they can figure out what we're talking about. What everybody else has, I think they wisely left residency alone and Board of Health alone and 80 to 100 seems to be the flavor of the three that went to the hearing, so why not? There we go.
Well, again, creates more opportunities.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess we didn't really talk about the residency requirement because it does say owners of the principal structure shall occupy as their primary residence, either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory apartment. So did, were we enter, I mean, that basic, the example that was used...
I think it's going to get us into trouble, but I'll leave it alone.
You'd leave it alone?
Well, you're getting into a seasonal situation.
Right. That's what I'm trying to accommodate is that if someone's, I mean, they don't have to be, we want the owner to be using one of those buildings year-round and not renting out both units in any way, shape, or form, right? Lots of communities did that by having a minimum residency. Some of them were like nine months and at that point, it's like, you're a resident. I mean, maybe you go to Florida for a month or two, but I mean, I don't think that that's really the issue. I think the issue is we just want to make sure that people aren't renting it out. So does it really need to be their primary residence?
Oh, I see, that one phrase there in Section 10.
Right, exactly.
We have it separated by commas, as their primary residence.
Right.
That probably, probably has legal implications in terms of where they pay taxes, where they...
Correct, right.
Where they vote.
Where they vote.
Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe we just, maybe we're silent. The owners of the principal structure shall occupy either and not have anything about as their primary residence.
If you guys are interested in that, that's something where I can, I can look through the bylaw a little bit more, maybe suggest some language for the next meeting if you...
Think that that would bring us into the area of providing a public meeting?
We're going to have to have a public hearing.
As I'm saying, we have to anyway, take the four town meeting.
I just think that, you know, if we were going to be all of a sudden making these by right, that's a case where, you know, that might be a bigger community discussion. I think some of the tweakings that we're doing now really aren't using that. I don't think so, but it's, let me take a look at it if you guys are interested, maybe come up with some language for the next meeting. And I don't, I think it might be relatively minor tweaking. I think the key is we don't want someone renting out both. We don't want some off-Cape person buying a property in Yarmouth, putting in an accessory dwelling, and then all of a sudden having duplex rentals in residential neighborhoods. So I think we can come up with something that would allow more flexibility.
But he or she would be allowed to rent...
One or the other.
One, on one side. The other side, they couldn't get, Americans are always looking for a go-around. They couldn't be there June, July, and August and rent it seasonally from September through May and still...
I think, yeah, I think you need to be clear that you can rent one unit and it needs to be rented year-round. That's it. No, you can, one of the two can be rented as, you know, you can decide at the time of your special permit which one you're going to be depending on what size you want, but only one of them can be rented. The other one needs to be used by the property owner or...
That would be a good item for a certificate of compliance.
Certificate of compliance for...
Some kind of, you know, some kind of a document relative to the use of the property.
I think when the building department does their inspections every other year, they ask kind of all of those questions. I mean, residency, obviously, that's simple.
Yeah.
It's simple, but I don't know how many people are being impacted by that if it...
And that's the language that's in the current...
Correct.
Accessory apartment.
Correct. I can look around a little bit more and see.
Why don't you ask Mark if you have a problem with it as well?
Yeah, that's a good question.
He's the one who's going to enforce all these suckers.
Yeah, poor Mark.
We're still, we're staying with the 15,000 square feet on the minimum lot size?
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree, just want to make sure. I'm just going by the highlighted yellows here.
Yep.
Yeah, anything that's highlighted in yellow is just a change from the last time that you had a draft.
There's a non-yellow part. I said to Kathy before the meeting, under general regulations of signage, which would be page seven of draft number four.
On signs?
On signs.
Yep.
And I preference my comments with this. I'm a salesperson on the road and I'm at gas stations all the time. Before I bought Jackie a yellow Volkswagen bug, I never looked at yellow Volkswagen bugs, but now every time one goes by, I go, is that, is that, no, okay. Same thing. Last week, I've noticed ad nauseam that the red-colored lights on the gas signs are for regular gasoline and green is for diesel and we're making them all do the color LED lights to be white.
I agree.
I don't know if Yarmouth is going to be the bane of the manufacture of gas signs existence when they make Yarmouth a special sign because we have to be all white.
They're not special. They come in, they come in a white, they come in red, they come in green. Just so you know, it's not special. It's a standard thing that you can buy as white.
It's standard green and red, I think. Or my other fallback is what if somebody has the white lights as we ask and they say, I'm going to put a piece of plastic and tape it over the white light so it appears red. I'm going to tape a green piece of cellophane over the white lights here. I just, I was just, again, I've noticed it all week now. Every time I drive by BJ's Gas there on 132 or the gas station that used to be, the one next to, blank, Chiodino's, you know, that one right there, Cape Cod Gas, whatever it is.
Cape Cod.
They all have the red and the green, red and green, red and green.
Same thing in Dennis where the Crossmont Square, that station has red and green on the price signer, has, also has the neon, the LED lights over the pumps signs.
I think you just need to...
Doesn't look bad.
You need to decide what you want Route 28 to look like. I mean, if you're trying to create more village feels, I think having these LED gas signs with different colors may not be what you're looking for. I think Patriot Square is very different. It's a very strip mall-y type area.
Set off the main drag.
Right. And I think we have that strip feel that we've been, or I know I have been working in design review and meetings we have with developers to make it look as good as possible. That's my only comment is what's it really going to look like? We're already giving them a give by making it automatic LED, so do you want to give the other give with the color? I have no idea how the public in town meetings is going to view that one.
I have my comments, but as a chairman, I'll sit and wait. Does anybody have any strong feeling either way, excuse me, on the red, green, or all white?
I don't have a problem with colors.
Joe, do you have any...
Think about where the gas stations are located.
I thought about that. The only ones that really don't have the, like the Exxon up there at White's Path would obviously flip real fast. The Sunoco might, but I don't think they have room for a major signage change.
In regards to the Village Centers, you got, there's Comby's in Village Center One, then the mobile station up there. Yeah, that's up where...
Right on the corner, yep.
Yeah, that small plaza is there. Lenzel Gray Road, yeah.
We can strike the reference to any color and let it be, let them decide what they want. If it doesn't say anything, then...
I was thinking middle of the road. I was going to keep the lights over the pumps white.
We already took out the lights over the pumps.
Did we?
Yeah.
All right. I was just going to let the diesel color be green and the regular gas be red and just call it a day. So I'm not letting them have any color they want. I was just trying to stay with the industry color.
Well, that's a cautionary measure as well because if you look at the pumps, the diesel is green.
Right.
The pump and the hose and...
Is green and the...
And it's bigger, yeah.
I just, for the traveling motorists, I'd stick, we probably should go with red and green. I don't know why, I just noticed that the past week, but it stands out. So that would be my quote-unquote motion. I don't need to make a motion to vote, but that would be my ask.
So you want to say the color of LED lights shall be red for regular gas and green for diesel? Do you want to dictate that?
I'm not sure all gas stations have that same requirement based on what you see today.
I don't know whether all gas stations do diesel too. I can honestly say I don't notice because I don't have a diesel vehicle, so.
I don't either, but now you're going to notice them. It's like I noticed yellow Volkswagens.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to specify or do you want to just? I think if you don't say anything, you're likely to get red for regular and green for diesel because I think that is somewhat of an industry.
And if that's the case, if we were to be silent on it and essentially let the retailer decide, I think that's a good thing. I mean, the things that we can constrict to, to, to bring to some form so that it's not, signs aren't out of control are this size, but driving by any one of those places, there are lots of colors. You know, there's Speedo red and Mobile blue and Hess green and there are, I mean, there are all sorts of colors. So let, I'd say let them decide.
Look at it from this perspective.
I don't, I don't think we want to regulate the color.
I'm, I'm, I think you'd agree.
But I think they would, I think you're, I think, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
But I think from what you've seen, Brad, I would imagine that's what they would pick is a red and green.
I'm assuming, but only dictating what I've seen recently this past week from Braintree to Dennis.
We could probably give them that option and then try and restrict those type of lights within the Village Centers other than the gas stations that are already in there or grandfathered. You know, based on signage, based on what we're doing with these LED signs, we certainly wouldn't want any. I don't think, I'd want to see any within the villages once they start to develop.
Yeah.
Would that, would that be something that...
I think it starts getting complicated with enforcement and that type of thing. I think if you want to limit it to two colors or not stay silent on it or whatever you guys want.
Why don't we stay, I like to, why don't we stay silent and see how it goes? This is always a fluid document and we come back to signs, it seems, once every 36 months. I don't see anybody coming up with a new gas station on Route 28 in the Village Centers that doesn't already exist there.
True.
Not in the Village Centers, probably not.
Why don't we strike color of LED lights to be white?
I'll confirm with Mark that he doesn't have any issues with ambiguity there by not saying. I don't think he will, but...
Wouldn't you want to give white as an option as well?
Oh, you could always do, yeah, anyone could do white, yeah.
Okay.
They're basically being limited to two gas prices anyway. Typically, what people do is they're regular because it's the lowest-priced one and then the diesel if they have it.
Just one more thing, just, I mean, we're all old enough to remember growing up with those big colored lights on the Christmas trees.
Right.
Somewhere, somewhere in the 70s, things started going...
Got classy with the white lights.
Small little white ones. Everybody said, ooh, they look nice, honey, next year we're going to do that. And everybody started changing.
Yep, and the blue.
Yeah.
We had them blinking too.
Old days.
So I'm just saying, if Joe is right and we let the person decide, I'm sure they're going to try to look as nice as they can.
The only other change was with regard to the static and scrolling based on Mary Bilbon's comments on the community information board. So the time and date and the gas prices need to be static except to change to update it for accurate information, but the community information boards can change it to update the information and may include screen changes and scrolling. Mark went out and looked at the D Y and for some reason when she said scrolling, I was thinking horizontally. And so I go, wait a minute.
No, that rules.
And so I, right, so I asked her, I go, are you talking vertical or horizontal? And Mark said he went out and it's not really scrolling like you would think scrolling like this. It just flips. So it's just, it's literally just a screen change every 15 seconds or something. So that's why I put in, and may include screen changes and scrolling. So, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make it have blue lights.
There's, we're silent on it, so anybody can have any color they want.
I think Mary mentioned blue.
Yeah, they said they were going to go...
Mary mentioned blue, but I think blue is hard to see.
They'll find the right color there, I'm sure. They can experiment.
Nothing else jumped out at me since we did entertainment, which I booked, I put in.
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only change I put in there was referencing the Mass General Law for entertainment because I think someone said, you don't, it's not all entertainment. It's just entertainment that meets that that could be allowed. And then just because there is some reference to adult entertainment in that Mass General Law, I want to just be clear, this excludes any form of adult entertainment. And then the last thing, sorry, Brad.
Almost got it through.
Almost did. Had to do with the definition for temporary outdoor recreation and the work that we've been doing with the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee on their interim policy and just, you know, they worked on a slightly different definition for an event, which made a lot of sense, so maybe we can bring that over and include that in the definition in the zoning bylaw. It's just a little bit more generic in nature with being an outdoor municipal cultural, educational, religious, social, charitable, or other program occasion or activity, including but not limited to, and then listing the same kind of ideas of the things that we had before conducted on an interim basis and it doesn't apply if it's considered accessory to an allowed use of business. We need to put that in our zoning bylaw even though they don't have that in the policy. And then we eliminated that duration of nine days based on discussions of the last meeting. So is that, everyone's good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
So Kathy, the language discussed December 5th relative to boat storage?
Yeah.
Oh, you're jumping on me, hold on.
Okay.
Go.
Who gave me this thing?
Me.
Okay, thank you. I'm like this.
I asked Joe while you were out of the room. I said, are you happy? And she said, I did some work and it looks like she did some great work there.
She did great work, yeah.
So Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just looking at, it says legally paved surface. Consider what that would...
What line out of you want?
That would be language discussed at December 5th.
That's exactly what Mark had.
Yeah.
What's, what's written above is slightly edited based on comments from the board and also added some language with regard to...
Okay, so you're going to disregard that?
That would be gone.
Okay, good.
So what it's going to be is one registered or United States Coast Guard documented boat may be parked or stored in the driveway of a residential lot regardless of location relating to the building, provided it does not create a traffic safety issue and adequate onsite parking remains for the property.
Yeah.
I think that's important because people get very, very upset when other people park in front of their house.
Yeah.
Even if they park in front of their own house, it's, makes it difficult for them to pull out of their driveway with visibility. It just seems to be a sticking point in town. We get a lot of complaints about people parking in front of, on the street.
My, my point was, you know, it mentions paved surface. We eliminated that, but you got a lot of driveways to the shelves, gravel, stone dust, so...
I think that's fine unless you guys have an issue.
That's great. Don't even, don't even go there.
I, the draft that I put together was, I tried to mimic the format here and things I, I did take out... And things I, I did take out were the driveway altogether. There are, I rode around town and I know from my own personal experience, people will store boats not on, in their driveway because they need their driveway.
Right, exactly.
And if we're gonna require people to have the, the, the number of parking spaces that they're supposed to have, if we're telling them they need to put the boat only in a driveway, we've eliminated some parking spots. And it's safe to put a boat on, on, on grass. Someone's, you know, who might not pay attention might put it over their septic system, shame on them, depending on the size of the vessel, but for a boat or a camper or whatever. So I, I, I don't think it, from my perspective and what I've seen, the practice is that it isn't necessarily in a driveway at all.
No.
And that in many cases, the most, the most likely place that would be least visible is actually beside a garage or where there, where there, where there wouldn't necessarily be a driveway. So I, I think we wanna think about not having it citing a driveway location as a requirement.
I think the only concern was what's to prevent someone from like literally parking it right in their front yard if you don't have any...
They do now.
Is that, I mean, we're trying to give someone, people a give here and not make them have to put it to the side and behind if it's really, because it's difficult to get boats. And I think recreational vehicles are something we weren't talking about giving any relief to before. I don't know if that's what you're, you're proposing here to include an RV.
Are, you see, I see, I see them, RVs parked on the grass, say, next to a garage, not in the driveway.
And that's fine because anybody behind the front face of the building, you can park anything in the back. You can park, as long as it's not in the front, behind the front face. This was to say, okay, in addition to that, you can do a boat in front of that. And then how do we wanna define where that boat can go if it's gonna be in front of the face of your building? So it's gonna basically be somewhere in your front yard. Is it gonna be in the driveway?
They are now. They, they are, they're, my drive around, lots of boats in front yards that aren't set way back off the street. Where, you know, I, I know of several situations where there's no way you can see the boat from the street and the neighbors can't see it because it's surrounded by, but it is in front of the house and it is not on a driveway. But that's because of the lot location.
Do we wanna say adjacent or adjacent to a driveway? I mean, you want it, you don't want it to be like in someone's front yard. You want it to be somewhere in the vicinity. They need it in the vicinity of the driveway or just park it anywhere.
Vicinity is gonna be, I think we'll have, we'd have to define vicinity. I mean, I, I, when I looked, I mean, I stopped and, you know, I don't have them with me, but I started taking pictures on it. Front yards are not off limits now. I mean, from, from the meaning that people just throw it in their front yard. Big boats. Well, I'm not sure we, we want that, but I think the, issue one was the driveway. I think requiring the driveway is an issue. And maybe there's a way to better define where on the lot it can be. If it's not on the side, if it's not in the, if it's not on the side behind the front line of the house, then it's gonna be in the, it then is in the front yard.
Right, but in the front yard to the side of the driveway is different than if somebody just pulls it in and it's like literally in front of, like the front door.
Your options are very limited if you've got a small lot. And you'll see people, you know, put boats in, that are very difficult, so. Have them off to the side, no way they can get in the back or side of the house. So the front of the boat is, is beyond the front of the house.
It is hard. What I've seen, I have actually seen a lot of people with smaller boats parking them in their driveway and still being able to park a car in front of it. And then they have their regular drive, typically we have one garage houses and ranches and they can still get in and out of their garage or parking it off to the side, but maybe not being able to get it fully back behind the front face. It's up to you guys and it's just...
I just have a question, I'm thinking like Mark and I wish I was as smart as Mark, but I think he's looking for something to enforce.
Yeah.
To have some, some guidelines. If, if someone lives in a house that's clearly off the beaten path or at least shielded from plain view by a swath of trees or what have you, he or she is probably not gonna receive a complaint from a neighbor.
That's right.
So whether they put it in their front side setback or the front yard or whatever, it's not really gonna matter a hill of beans to Mark or to the town. I think what I've understood here is that we're trying to use the word driveway so that if the neighborhood is, is small or at least tightly wound together in the small lots, then he or she who is enforcing this has something they can say, "Are you in a driveway? If so, you've got one, if not, we have some problems."
Yeah. No, I, 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 it's, it is, it, it will, it would become a problem, but my concern would be, so you park it in the driveway, the recreational vehicle.
Drive, or boat, she didn't want him to do, you don't want him to do RVs, do you?
That's not what was originally proposed, that...
But let's, let's...
That's not the biggest problem.
Let's stay with boats right now, so let's...
More people have boats than RVs.
Use your example as a boat.
Go ahead. Park your boat.
So you gotta put it in the driveway.
Right.
Guess where they're gonna park the cars?
I don't know.
Front yard.
In the yard?
I bet.
In the yard or on the street?
In the yard. If it snows, then yeah. You have no alternative.
Okay, but it says here that, it says you gotta have adequate, onsite parking must remain available. That means Mark can now cite them if Mrs. Smith wants to complain about Mr. Jones around the corner. At least he has a legal land to stand on and say, "Look, you don't have adequate parking because your car's now in front of the house." Like literally.
Yeah.
Do you wanna say adjacent, a driveway or adjacent to the driveway? I think adjacent means it's gotta butt up against it in some way.
I, I do, I, before I answer that, I wanna go back to, I thought we were talking in general about any recreational vehicle and where it might be placed.
No, it was specifically related to the boat. The problem is, is that, exactly what you're saying is that people have difficulty on their small lots meeting the requirement of putting it behind the front face. It's not that there's not something clear to enforce, it's just that it's almost impossible to enforce without going out and, and you're talking, too many people can't meet that compliance and they, you know, we are the seaside community, so people have boats. And whenever one person, and what Mark was saying is like whenever one person gets a complaint against them, because we're not looking for these things, it's when we have a complaint and they go out and say, "You can't park your boat there," then they go, "Well, what about all these other people?" And then they provide that list of 16 other things and now the building department has to go around. So I think it's more a case of what battles does, do you want the building department to fight? And if you could write something that is reasonable as to where it could go on it, he's comfortable with saying, "Okay, let's just say we allow one so that we're not having this huge enforcement problem."
The complaint might even be driven by other issues as well.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's one neighbor doesn't like another neighbor and they use the town as, as the hammer.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we have this applied to, say, a camper or an RV? Why are we segregating boats? You have, you have RVs that are, could, could be larger than a boat.
It's larger than somebody else's.
I don't think we have as big a problem with the RVs. And I think there's not as many people have an RV. I mean, just the percentage of the population in town that has an RV compared to people who have boats. Lots more people have boats. It sounded like, oops, excuse me, from what Mark was saying, that that's not where his enforcement issues are really coming from.
It's on the, it's on the boat side.
You actually have people complaining about an RV being legally parked on someone's property, but it's right of butting against someone else's property and they just don't like it. So I think if we started allowing those to be, you might get more complaints.
So the, the thinking was that this relief of not having it placed in a particular restricted area vis a vis the house location, that relief would apply only to boats. All other recreational vehicles...
Behind the front face.
Would be, be behind the front face.
Correct.
Or shielded from view by a lot of trees. Do you wanna ask Mark if, if Joanne's idea has merit or at least has teeth enough for him or not? I have a feeling he'd like the word driveway in there. I don't wanna slam the door on somebody who did some work, I just figured...
No, no, I, I, I started from a place that I didn't realize that it was only boats that were, we were looking to give some relief to.
But you still wanna, if we take RV out of yours, you still wanna take the word driveway out of your motion?
Yes, I think driveway is, I, I, I would, I would like to do that, yes.
So may be parked or stored on a residential lot regardless of location, provided it does not create it. So it would just be taking out on a residential lot instead of in a driveway of a residential lot.
So I'm just gonna play devil's advocate if, if, what's the smallest village? Captain's Village is pretty tightly ensconced next to each other. So if somebody Captain's Village wants to park their boat horizontally across their front yard, if this goes through, they'll be allowed to do that?
Correct.
Do most of those driveways over there, are they single or double width?
Typically, you have, yeah, you have a lot of the double widths, you really do. Even though you may only have one actual garage, you have, there's like a little paved or people have made a little gravel or they're, they're using it for parking. So there's usually ways of, of getting around it. I, I don't, in the walks, I live in the villages and in the walks that I have, there's not that many boats, in all honesty. And if they are, they're like, like, they're small boats that someone could actually put in the driveway and then still park in their, in their driveway.
And I have no battle in this, this fight. If you're willing as a boater to allow other boaters to park his or her boat in the worst possible place in their front yard and say, "Well, that's your one, okay," then I'm okay with that too. That's all.
No, I, I, I hear you. I, I, would I wanna look at it, you know, across the street from my little house? Probably not. But I guess the definition of, it's hard to, it's, it's almost as if we're, we're trying to qualify the quality of the loca- you know, how good does it look? Like a tasteful location on your property. Well, tasteful would be the function of whose, whose taste it is. And again, if you've got, I think if there was some way...
We tell people where to put stuff all the time on their property, that's called zoning.
Yeah, if, that's right. We'll have site review on boat pricing.
No, no, thank you.
I hope not. But I do think that some relief for property, property sizes that can accommodate tastefully in a, in a, in a non, I don't, not, not visible, it's still visible, but in a...
Not in-your-face visible.
Yeah, not in your front yard, you're staring at it.
All right, could you just...
And it's, and it's, you know, it's up on blocks sideways.
You ask Mark?
That's not what we want, I don't think.
We'll stay with your highlighted...
I don't think anybody wants that.
We'll stay with your highlighted version here. Would you just ask Mark if he needs the word driveway in there to add some kind of just continuity to his enforcement or, or would he be okay to take that out? And he could look at it and say yes or no. Because he's the one where the rubber has to be...
And, you know, maybe having it in the driveway is what the constraint, that, that actually might work because they'd be, they'd be taking up, it might, it might actually, I'm just thinking of this, a couple of examples I saw. One, the boat is in, the big sailboat is in the front yard, you know, had to get it, wiggle it through between sets of trees, front yard, driveway over here. If they were required to have it in a driveway, maybe they wouldn't store it there. They couldn't store it there because they've got four vehicles they need to park.
Right.
You know? So maybe, maybe requiring it to be on the driveway actually might not be such a bad idea. It would limit it so it wouldn't be in the front yard, but it could be on the driveway.
Right.
So now I've gone all the way around.
You went all the way around.
I went all the way around.
Well, that's okay, that's why you have these discussions.
You can ask him either way. I have a feeling he'll want the word driveway in there, but if you could ask him.
This is a give compared to what's required, what's allowed now.
Driveway's a good option.
So it, it helps a lot of people. I think it would bring a lot of people into, into compliance so that we're not on wild goose chases. You know? And these are sometimes the people, the, the things that gets called on are small boats, not the big boats, you know?
Yeah.
But the language has to be clear so he can enforce it.
That's why I'm just asking.
Right. And, and we don't get something we don't want.
And you're right, I think the, what happened, he described it to me. It's one neighbor complaining about another and using the town as the, as the arbiter.
Leverage.
So, yeah, I'll talk to Mark about it and see what he has to say.
Bad boats.
So forget what I wrote because I, I misinterpreted what I... It was...
You're not planning on buying a boat, are you?
No.
Neither am I, so...
Boats I, I better have three buffet meals a day and a bartender named Ice.
I do think though, one thing we will reconsider again at our next meeting, but I think just generally calling them recreational vehicles, vessels and related equipment isn't a bad idea. I, calling them camp, having campers identified specifically, you can put that in the definition piece. And I threw some words at what a recreational vehicle is and what a recreational vessel is. And somewhere maybe we fit driveway back in here.
So were you interested in changing the definitions, Joanne?
No, I just thought that if you're gonna use the words recreational vehicle or recreational vessel, we should have a definition of it. We had all the subset definitions of camper types.
Well, camping and recreational equipment basically includes boat, camping trailer, motorhome, pickup coach and travel trailer.
Camp, that's camping.
Camping and recreational equipment includes boats, motorhomes, camping trailer, pickup coach and travel.
Boat, any inboard, outboard, sail craft, open cabin type.
Right.
Open or cabin type.
All terrain vehicles stored on a trailer, ski mobiles stored on a trailer. They usually come in, you know, sometimes they're in pairs, ski mobiles on a trailer. So that's what I was kinda thinking of as well.
Travel trailer, pickup coach.
We'll take a look at the definitions and see if we can tweak that at all.
I talked about, we seem to all agree on that one, to allow the extra space there for ancillary features.
Skipping stormwater.
I skip, what did I skip?
Stormwater.
Oh, thank God. Water everywhere, we got a boat to do it with.
We just launched the boat, now we're in the water.
I did skip stormwater, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of different compliance requirements associated with the MS4 stormwater permit that was finally issued last July. And then it gives some different phasing timing of amendments that can be made over the next two years, over the next four years in order to be in compliance. One of the initial things that the stormwater consultant, who's working for the DBW with, with all of this, had recommended was that we have a reference in our zoning bylaw to the Town of Yarmouth Stormwater Management Regulations. Those are existing regulations right now. People are required to adhere to them, just like you're required to adhere, adhere to the septic regulations, the building code and not necessarily everything that's, doesn't necessarily get spelled out. But what this does is it ties it back into the zoning bylaw and they, you can amend the Town of Yarmouth Stormwater Management Regulations through a public hearing through the Conservation Commission. The amendments that they're talking about making for the MS4 are not significant, but then there might also wanna be some additional discussions as to whether we wanna modify the stormwater regulations and it would get to things like subdivisions. It would also get to things like maybe we wanna have, you know, any project that just disturbs, you know, half an acre period, half... just disturbs, you know, half an acre period has to get some type of certification at least or something related to stormwater. The things that we're talking about making for the, this town meeting are really just incorporating in that reference to that stormwater management regulations. Then there would be quite a bit of work that would need to be done over the next year or so in conjunction with the Conservation Commission, the stormwater consultant and, and us, as to what edits would then get made to the subdivision control rules and regulations and also to the stormwater regulations. This is just kind of setting the stage for those future amendments, but not really doing a whole heck of a lot.
So if we're at town meeting and someone stands up and asks a question of a planning board member about what are the stormwater regulations, we're saying at this point, we don't have them set yet because we're following the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
No, there, there are stormwater management regulations right now. Basically, they have to do with projects, if you're disturbing more than an acre, but they have to discharge into a wetland resource area or discharge into the town's municipal system. That can simply be edited a little bit more and to meet the MS4 requirements. And then we could deal with stormwater separately, completely through our own rules and regulations. We haven't, right now, that's how we do it with stormwater for subdivisions, it's all done through our current regulations. There's some discussion of maybe having it all incorporated into one document. These are stuff that we can all talk about as we move forward, but some, some work needs to happen through, for the stormwater regulations, but that would be happening through properly noticed public hearings from various boards.
Okay. Any problems with that?
Nope.
Okay. Hmm. Looks like a slippery slope, but. By the way, on a side note to that, don't we have a couple four-hour classes coming up at some point? We've got to take-
We do, yes. I-
Because that's what I was thinking of when I started reading this sent home last night. I'm like, don't we have a green community? We have to be certified or something.
No, we, we need to do our municipal vulnerability preparedness.
Yes.
Yes.
We have to give up eight hours of our lives-
Yes, you do.
For $0.00.
We, we received a grant for-
Yeah, we didn't get anything out of it. Go ahead.
For municipal, well, what it helps is it's the municipal preparedness, vulnerability preparedness grant. It basically is a whole program where they give you money to hire a consultant and we have gone out for an RFQ and we received two responses and we're reviewing those and hopefully we will pick one of the, they have to be a state certified provider. So everyone's already gone through the training and that type of thing. And then part of it is having this whole workshop where you get different members of the community involved, talk about different vulnerabilities, identify issues that people know about and then kind of come up, the whole idea is to come up with a report that has very itemized list of coastal resiliency projects that could be implemented. And once we have that and become an MVP community, then we'd be eligible for MVP grants to implement those and also it gives us higher standing in some other grant applications that we might be going for.
Hence my question, when, if we were supposed to pick-
Oh, February, March or something? We haven't, I need to get the consultant on board and then talk to them about whether it makes sense from their experience, whether two, four hours works better, like two Friday afternoons in a row, or whether an eight hour works better. And then we'd be coming back to the commission, the planning board and CEDC who all indicated they would participate and kind of poll you guys and see what would work.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So it's, it's on the plate.
So this is a workshop we would attend as planning board members?
Yep.
Yes, mandatory.
Would that put Yarmouth in a position to apply for grants relative to wastewater resources? Because we've got a lot of wastewater resources coming up.
No, I don't think it's really related to wastewater. It might be, you know, replacement of a culvert that's problematic or some type of a revetment that's falling down. Those types of coastal resiliency projects.
I see.
It's mostly related to sea level rise and things like that. It's a, it's a state program.
It's a state?
Yep, yep. It's all in that climate.
Revetment of the lobster boat is falling down, so it's-
Where, where could, where could I find out more about this?
I can send you some information.
Yeah. I guess I'm not, it's not coming quickly to my-
It was probably six months ago.
Eight, nine months ago.
No worries.
All right, I can go back and look at my-
No, it's okay.
We all said, "Oh, yeah, we'll do that."
Is it available online?
There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of good information.
She's talking about taking the test.
The test?
Or the course of eight hours or something.
I just want to understand-
She just wants to know more about it.
More about the it, about it.
Tom said, "Is it available online?" Like, could we just, you know?
Well, they have a, there's a certain protocol that they do and they have a really good guidebook on the protocol that I could just send to you.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's, it's really easy.
To understand and-
Yeah. It's actually kind of interesting.
The workshop.
And they have it very set. It's all very prescriptive.
Great.
Cape Cod Commission Regional Policy Plan Update and Technical-
Yeah. So, so on the 13th, the Cape Cod Commission voted to send the final draft of the update for the RPP to the Assembly of Delegates and Barnstable County Commissioners to, with a request to adopt it as a county ordinance. They got like 135 different comments from people and they did a really good job of summarizing them into different categories and then having an actual response to, to people's comments. And I thought they did a good job of trying to incorporate at least something in, to the RPP about all the comments that, that I kind of had, or most of the comments and other people's as well. So they, they, they had a Herculean task and I think they did a pretty good job. So that's moving forward, but one of the other things has to do with the 14 technical bulletins, which are like two or three times the thickness of the RPP. And they did extend the public comment period on that through to January 13th and they will be having a public hearing on it on January 10th. So it gives us a little bit more time to, to take a look at, at those, for staff to take a look at those, too, and, and see what comments, if any, that we're really interested in, in including and then talking to the planning board, probably at our next meeting as to what you guys are interested or not interested in providing.
Oops, excuse me.
Just in terms of time, I know, God bless you, your office, yeah, I was about to say your office is closed for the next days.
I know.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I know.
I just felt sorry for you.
I feel sorry for me, too. That makes you feel any that way.
Gee whiz.
All right. Minutes of December 5th. We can, we can vote on us, okay.
Is everyone here who can vote?
Yes.
All moved. We approve the minutes of December 5th, 2018.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The vote's abstained. By the minuscule vote of 400.
Yay.
It is so authorized. Appeals and agenda. Did we get an email about Board of Appeals? I don't think so. We got a lot of stuff from Kyle, but I don't know.
Well, they only meet once in November and once in December because of the holiday.
All right, I didn't see anything.
So, yeah.
Okay. Committee updates. Joe, you're always exciting about the capital budget.
Nothing to report. We've, we've, we're in, in wait to board meeting.
Wait to the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, Board of Selectmen. Hasn't been scheduled yet. Sometime we present to them. So we haven't, we haven't met in a month. Three weeks.
I did, no, I just have a dumb question. I have a feeling I know the answer to this. If in fact the school vote goes through and the town has to take those dollars out of its technical operating budget, that's for FY '20 going forward, not FY, no, we're in FY '20 now, right?
We're in FY '19.
We're, we're '19 now, we're-
We're going to be '20, though, in a few months, that's what I mean.
Twenty, twenty is one.
So it'll have to come out in FY '21.
I, right. That's been a little bit unclear from the town administrator's office with regard to how severe it's going to be, because it's going to be a function of when they actually start the bonding.
And that's why I'm asking, because-
And whether there's an override to-
When I was on the capital budget, I mean, the first thing that got cut, we had to dip into operating was the capital budget. We went from this budget to this.
That was probably, that probably will be what happens.
So you're going to see it coming.
Okay. That's, that's, again, the only thing I thought of when I was reviewing this last night. I'm like, wait a minute, there's a draconian sword out there that may be falling. Okay. Norm, do you have anything?
Well, CEDC during December, basically we had 11 people who applied for the tourism grants and we gave out $141,525 in grants this year. We'll probably take a look at the grant process because there were a couple of things we questioned whether we should even be granting some of these, but we were doing it really because it was expeditious more than, we wanted to get the money out of the funds, but this wasn't the place to do it.
Because I know Agway will be back in front of you next year.
Agway will be back next year.
Right, won't be this year, because we just put together our appetizers.
We had a few small ones that were new, but they weren't, they weren't major. They weren't asking for a lot of money, probably less than $10,000 between the four of them. So, but outside of that, so we had some people that, that, they may not be happy with what they got because we had to cut, we had to do some cutting.
Makes sense.
Even to get there.
Okay. Thank you for all you do. Tom, do you have anything?
Yeah, we had a meeting with the trust. Kathy gave a overview of some of the topics we discussed with ADUs. CPA met with more applicants where we had requested additional information and we have, I think, three outstanding town-sponsored applications pending review based on the CPA coalition in regards to the use of funds for design and engineering. Karen's waiting on information on, in regards to that. And then also CPA at the last meeting mentioned the fact that the Riverwalk, Riverwalk Park might be in jeopardy in regards to funds that the CPC approved for 3.7 million if 800,000 from the open space, open space area can't be added to that. In other words, there's not enough money to go around for the applications that are coming forward. And if we can't use open space funds for the Riverwalk, then we're going to be, they're going to have, we'll have to re-vote that again and see what we can come up with, with funds. We're still waiting for the state relative to the year end.
Karen has been talking to town council and Mike's been talking to the coalition. I think they now need to get together and talk about that.
So that should be forthcoming. That's all here, Ms. Jim.
As well. Correspondence?
I send you guys whatever comes through.
Staff updates?
I think at our, at our next meeting, we're going to need to kind of finalize the language or the general ideas of what we're going to be doing, because we're going to need to set the, the public hearing, where we want to have the public hearing and that needs to be somewhat prescriptive with regard to the language that's included in the hearing so people fully understand what's being proposed. We'll also need to talk about the articles and how we want to break up the different amendments that we're proposing, whether we want to have, you know, five individual ones and then maybe a miscellaneous one and what gets included in that. We typically have five to seven at the maximum. Typically, the last four or five years, we've had no more than five. So that's something that we need to get placeholders to the Board of, we, meaning me on your behalf, to the town administrator's office by the 4th of January. So on the 2nd, we'll have to kind of decide how to do it. I can, I can give an idea of how I think it might, we might be able to break, break some stuff up. So that's something that next meeting we have to kind of finalize some of those. And then the final warrant goes out on the 29th. So we can still have some placeholders and stuff at the next meeting, so more is better than less, but we're going to have to finalize that pretty quickly and then also come up, like I said, for the dates for the public hearing.
We usually run them all together, don't we? The articles?
We need, oh, yeah.
Yeah, we run them in a row, but we usually break them out almost a little bite, so it's this, this, this and this. We haven't had a major, major one in a while since ECD or some point.
Right.
Try to keep it simple.
And then on the meeting on the 16th of January, someone would like to have a name change on a street, on a private way. So we will be talking, that's a formal public hearing, so that notice needs to go out in the paper. And we've also received, the planning boards received a request from the developer of the Hawks Wing subdivision to get some of their money back. Maybe like, I don't know, a year and a half ago, they got a big chunk left and they were left with $8,800 to do some work, including as-built drawings. And they want to get some of that money back.
They lift up the culverts and put the top base on?
Oh, yeah. Oh, they've done all of that kind of stuff. This was-
What was that relative to?
I thought, but Hawks Wing is sober.
Yeah, the $8,800 had to do, they, they needed to do some planting, some Rosa Magosas or whatever those are around the drainage area and they had some issues with some of their drainage structures that needed to be repaired and then the as-built drawings. They haven't finished everything. I was kind of hoping they would just finish it and come to you guys with one final request for the $8,800. I'm not convinced they had, if you give them everything that they have, whether we'll have enough money left. But that's something that will be discussed on the 16th and they'll have representation here to talk about that.
We have something from the town engineer saying what he or she thinks they've done or hasn't done?
I do, as of an inspection that was done in July, I've requested to the developer if they've made any changes since then and if they have, then I'll send them out again. But if not, I'm not going to just send anyone out. I don't think they've done any additional work since July. But if they do, I'll have to have him go out and do an inspection to let you guys know what's remaining.
Okay.
It's very minor, we're very close.
Really?
I just wish they would finish, so, but no worries. We can talk about that on the 16th. So I just wanted to let you know those two things were on the agenda for that day.
Okay. Is everybody going to be here on the 2nd? The four of us that are here, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, at least we have a quorum.
Good.
Okay.
Big decisions to be made.
Especially, and we'll have Chris and Lee, we'll do all the presenting.
Yep.
That's good, so there we go.
Good luck with that.
We'll have them go and then Tom Baron will be in reserve.